We'll now call this regular meeting of Jacksonville City Council an order. To begin with, we're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Robert Warden, all by implication by our city attorney. Please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we pause once again to give you thanks, to give you thanks for this most glorious and beautiful day that you've bestowed upon our city, and to give you thanks for all the blessings that you bestow upon each of us individually and corporately as citizens of Jacksonville. We especially recognize those blessings as we continue to pray for those victims of Hurricanes Helene and Milton. We pray that your presence would be with them during their time of need, and that you would help them in rebuilding their lives and their communities. We also pray for our military who is serving us here and around the world, for their anxious families. We pray for all those who will be coming tomorrow for the Beirut observance, that your comfort and presence would be in their lives. And as always, we pray for our mayor and for our council as they deliberate our citizens' business. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Counsel, at this time, would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? If you're not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next, we have the minutes from the October 8th, 2024 workshop meeting.
Public comment.
Public comment. Oh, I'm sorry. For some reason, I have a tendency to skip right over that one. All right, we have our first session of public comment, and only session of public comment for this evening. And I'm going to read our council rules. I think I reset the whole thing. It's now time for the public comment portion of the agenda. This is a time that council has set aside during each regular meeting to hear comments from the public. This is not a question and answer session, but a time for you to express your views on city issues to the council. Each speaker who signed the public comment signup sheet may come to the podium when I call your name. Please state your name and address for the record. You may speak for up to three minutes. When the timer at the podium, and also displayed on the screen, turns yellow, that is a signal that there is a 30 seconds of time remaining, and you may wish to begin wrapping up your comments. Okay. With that, the first, well, the only person signed up for tonight is Melanie Marzett.
Hello, Melanie Marzett, 403 Alta Vista Loop. It's about ethical and unethical behavior. In September, I asked for the salary of a person who does some Facebook advertisement for recreation. What prompted that was an advertisement that had the word spooks in it. I emailed the city manager to let him know that spooks is a derogatory name used to describe black people. When I didn't hear back, I sent a follow-up email with the definition and pictures. After that, he responded, and ultimately, the advertisement was taken down. During this time, I wondered why the city allowed a former employee who resigned, moved away, to continue to hold a position in recreation when you have creative personnel that currently work for the recreation. The director of the recreation found the money for this person. However, the people who had to stop working last year, or hours were cut right before Christmas holiday, nothing. The recreation department still have employees who don't make a livable wage, yet you can sign off on a contract for this employee. Without recades and program assistance, you could not run several after-school programs that are vital to recreation. Is this something you do for all employees or certain employees? The city pays the media department $282,619.75. They do a great job. Why are we, meaning taxpayers, paying for outside help when the city has all it needs with the employees that show up every day in the recreation department? This behavior is unethical. Focus on employees that show up every day, and where are the checks and balances? Who signed off on this? So I still haven't received the pay for that particular person. I still don't understand how that even happened. It was an issue before I was unjustly fired last year, and it's still an issue. I don't understand why no one, when things are mentioned, even bother to ask those questions. It's ridiculous. And then the other thing is, what's going to end up with these people who still can't make a livable wage, yet you can find money to pay for what you want to pay for? That's all I have to say.
Now, we'll adopt the amendments and consent items from October 8th, 2024 workshop. A move?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We'll go to item number six. This is a public hearing on Unified Development Ordinance text amendment, and Jeremy Smith will be handling this presentation. Jeremy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is a proposed text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, Article 5, specifically Section 5.2, Part F, downtown districts as it relates to buffer yards. Ty Warden, associate, submitted this request and pointed it out to staff, and we support that we believe there is an inconsistency with our buffer yard requirements as it relates to downtown business and downtown residential. Just trying to get the clicker to work. Next slide, please. Currently, if you have the same zoning next door to the same zoning, a buffer is not required. However, that, for example, corridor commercial next door to residential multifamily requires a 30-foot Type A buffer. Downtown zones, when they're next door to different zoning, it's a Type B. Well, currently, the way the table reads, if you have downtown business next to downtown business, a buffer is triggered. And that is not consistent with what happens in all zoning districts. So with this text amendment, Ty Warden is requesting that we change, in those instances where you have downtown business next to downtown business, or downtown residential next door to downtown residential, a buffer would not be triggered, and this would make that, those two districts, consistent with the other districts within the Unified Development Ordinance. With all that being said, the planning board, along with staff, is recommending approval of this amendment that is consistent with the adopted CAMA policy 44.3, that it maintains policies and regulations that promote consistency and predictability in our development process. With that said, I'll be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Counsel, any questions? Mr. Smith.
Thank you, sir.
At this time, we'll recess the regular meeting and open up a public hearing on this matter. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this particular item dealing with the Unified Development Ordinance text amendment? See, no one will close the public hearing. Counsel, you're being asked to consider the proposed amendment.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend that we approve the UDO text amendment, found in attachment A. It is consistent with the adopted CAMA plan. Policy 44.3 is reasonable and is in the public interest.
Second. A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Here, not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next, we have item number seven on the agenda. This is a public hearing also on the Unified Development Ordinance text amendment dealing with accessory standards for outdoor display and development standards, dealing with signage. And Ryan will be, Ryan King will be presenting this item. Ryan?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This is a follow-up to some discussions that some citizens raised with council over the past few months. We've worked with some businesses along the Marine Boulevard and the Lejeune Boulevard corridors to come up with a proposal. In conjunction with that, there's some cleanup items that we have proposed as well. This specifically would be an amendment in the Unified Development Ordinance for Articles 4.3 accessory use standards, along with 512 signage. The biggest issue is businesses want to have an area for outdoor display sales but are unable to do so because there's currently a 100-foot setback that's found in the accessory use standard. So that's one of the items that we've identified that needed to be investigated, and that was brought forth and put in the UDO in 2014 when it was adopted. And as you can imagine, some of those businesses along Lejeune Boulevard and Marine Boulevard have had properties acquired for right-of-way purposes over the years, so they no longer have the area for outdoor storage. So we've looked at that, and then additionally, there are some questions about signage. Some of these were specific to the citizens we talked with, and some other items are just cleanup items. For example, holiday display lights, there's currently a reference to, they need to be removed within so many days after the holiday, but there's no start date. So we're proposing to add a start date. That way, it's clear when you can put those lights up, when they have to come down. Also, reference to the UDO admin manual about what those holidays are. The other item, you know, it's the political season. Hope everybody's gone out and vote. I did that last night. The political signs, we're going to adjust the start date and extend the end date so that it's more reflective of what the general statutes have for theirs. So 30 days prior to early votes is when the signs can be in place, and then we're given 10 days to have the signs removed following the date conclusion of the election versus three days. So that'll give the parties time to remove those signs. And as you can imagine, that during local elections, it may not take that full three or four days, but when you're dealing with the national election like we are this year, they may need additional time. Hopefully, you know, maybe they'll have them all picked up within two or three days, but this just mirrors that general statutes. There's also some current language about temporary signs for a start and end date, and we're going to propose that that be removed, because we're going to create an alternative, if council's willing to accept this change, for feather flags. So I'll come back to the feather flags in a minute. So let me give you an example of the outside display. This is just a pretty graphic as far as outside display. If this building's within 100 feet of the right-of-way, they would not be able to do this. That exemption would allow those businesses along Lejeune Boulevard and Marine Boulevard within 100 feet the ability to do this, as long as it doesn't violate other codes. Now, this is a good example, we think. Here's a bad example, and this is why we have to worry about things. So part of the language that we wrote into the code is maximum area, and also that the items have to be removed each night. So we have dealt with a situation like this. This is not Jacksonville. This was just a random internet photo that we felt would kind of demonstrate the concerns that staff has to worry about when we bring text amendments for you, that if we're not careful, we could end up with this. So at least it'll have to go in every night, and it's limited to a height and limited to an area. As far as the feather flags, right now, the feather flags that are shown on the right, everybody's allowed to have one of these for every 50 feet of either storefrontage or street frontage, depending on if you're a multi-tenant building or a standalone site. Well, some people may not want to use feather flags. So if you're allowed to have this temporary signage, we basically said, okay, well, in an alternate, in lieu of a feather flag, or in combination, if you're allowed to have more than one, you'd be able to add a temporary sign like you see here on the right-hand side. This is just from another municipality. This was on their webpage. We kind of borrowed their photo. These are the temporary signs. They're very similar to political signs, that you could, if you're allowed two signs, you can put one feather flag and one of these signs on the left side of your screen. You could do two on the left, two of the right, any combination that you're allowed to have, but it's going to be based on one per every 50 feet of either storefrontage or street frontage, depending on the situation. So that's kind of the synopsis of the proposals that we're proposing. In addition, one of the things, these are all existing standards, but we just felt it would be an opportunity to kind of remind our businesses and citizens and the mayor and council that signs are not allowed within the rights-of-way. They will be picked up if they're in the right-of-way, and I got a photo that I'll share with you here in a minute that kind of helps clarify that. Not allowed within site triangles. Those are on private property, so if they're violating the site triangle situation, we'll send a notice of violation or use another remedy and penalty, and I'll show you those here in a second as well. Currently, the ordinance is pretty consistent across the state. You know, we don't want signs that revolve or animated, use the apparent movement to attract the attention of the public because of public health and safety that we're worried about, similar to the electronic message center signs, they can change every nine seconds. As long as they just change, that's the, these fancy electronic message center signs that are used on the bottom half of the sign, it used to be 30 seconds, it used to be prohibited, then council allowed it for 30 seconds, and then we've reduced that down to eight seconds, and it seems to be working well. It just can't be animated. As far as, you know, when staff picks up signs, you know, the right-of-way, we utilize information to include GIS maps, surveys, concrete monuments, utility poles, and this is, we've got a policy procedure in place that we already have in the UDO admin manual that talks about how we will administer that. And the best way to kind of show you that is, is if you can imagine on this sign, the utility poles that you see, if it's on the street side, that's basically deemed right-of-way. That's what we use as kind of our property line boundary. It may not be perfect. It's probably erring on the side of caution in the property owner's favor. If it's on the right-hand side of those utility poles, or concrete monuments, or survey stakes, if we have surveys that show where the trail is in relation, if it's on the right-hand side, that's where code enforcement will pick up those signs if they're in the right-of-way. If they're on the backside, we will send out a penalty. And what is the penalties? Well, here's the list of the penalties that the UDO identifies. We have civil penalties, which is $250 a day per violation, and they're cumulative. We can issue a stop work order if there's work being done. We can deny or withhold permits until we get abatement. That's the idea behind, we just want them to comply with the regulations, so abate it, and, you know, we move on. Revocation of zoning permits, which is called out in the general statutes, injunctions, order of abatements, so on and so forth. So the most standard ones are the ones at the top, which are civil penalties, stop work orders, revocation, and deny-whewhold permits. Those are the typical ones that we utilize, but there are the laundry list of opportunities, and we can use any combination of these. We don't just have to do one. We could do three or four of them at the same time, just trying to get the abatement of the violation. With that being said, be happy to answer any questions that the mayor and council has. The Jacksonville Planning Advisory Board, last week at their monthly meeting, recommended that council approve the UDO text amendment, found in attachment A, that the proposed amendment is consistent with the CAMA plan, policy 38, and is reasonable and in the public interest.
One quick question.
Mm-hmm.
With these signs that are in, I need my memory refreshed here. What gives us the authority to remove signs out of the state right-of-way?
The, there's general statutes that say that they're prohibited, and then our ordinance say that no signs can be within a right-of-way. So our Unified Development Ordinance calls out right-of-way prohibition.
I have a question, Ryan. Under the regulations for temporary signs, a comment, I think folks are going to appreciate the ability to not be limited to just a feather flag on occasion. On item three under there, it says, "Displays including lighting for the holidays could go up 30 days prior to the holiday and remove 10 days following." That does not specify commercial, so that means it would apply to residential as well. And I knew, you know, around Halloween and Christmas, you know, we've got some inflatable turkeys and inflatable Santas and Christmas lights that people like to put out, and I think 30 days is a little bit tight for families, and I don't want to see something. I understand the principle and the need for this in order to have a legal basis on which to deal with repeat offenders and people who are really, really pushing the envelope. Have to have some standards. But I don't want to put something in place that's going to cause the average family who's having a good time and wants to put their holiday decorations up a week early to find themselves in a noncompliance situation. I think maybe 60 days would be a better option there, or else some sort of specification between residential and commercial. Thoughts?
I agree with that.
I mean, I like putting my Christmas stuff up around the middle of November, just because Thanksgiving weekend, I'm cooking a turkey, that's enough work right there. So I don't like to do it all in one weekend, and 30 days before Christmas, just for example, with my household, would be, you know, December 25th, or November 25th, which is usually right smack in the middle of the Thanksgiving holiday, which for me doesn't work because I got one set of hands, and I get tired climbing a ladder, ain't no fun at my age anymore. So.
I'm just curious why.
A little wiggle room would be good.
I'm just curious why. I know we've had issues with commercial. Have we had any issues on the residential side with holiday displays?
I think that in the past, there's been some issues, but I think it's been more on the tail end, like people haven't removed the lights. I can't think of a single situation where they were installed too soon. And at the end of the day, we just currently don't have anything, so it really creates a loophole. So we were just trying to close that loophole, whether it be 30 days, 45, 60. I just think at least it provides a clarity on when it can start, when it can end. So I would lean on Mr. Carter, but I believe that you certainly could adjust that prior to the adoption, if that's what council would like to see done.
Well, I think separating from residential, commercial is good, because, I mean, I understand the commercial side, you don't want, you know, the lights impeding driving and other things of that nature, but if someone's house, I don't really see the big deal. So I would just, can we separate them?
I mean, the only thing that worries me is it would, could that be deemed content-based? But.
Well, we have. Why don't we just strike it? Unless someone's had a problem with holiday displays going up too early or coming down too late.
We have had that problem.
You have had.
On the commercial side, yes, sir.
Let me ask, let me ask a quick question. When do we put ours up, the city put theirs out, on the polls?
Thank you, sir.
You know, they have such a large amount of it, they have to start early enough in order to get it done.
And we'd like to see those still go up there pretty.
You know, and it comes down to enforcement. You know, I just don't see us enforcing on the residential side. Certainly, we need to enforce more signage. That seems to be the biggest problem on the commercial side. I just don't want to be intrusive in the residential neighborhood if we're not really planning on enforcing it. We don't have the manpower to enforce it. And then I do have, I'm going to veer off from there and go to the political signs. It's got an underline, so that means we just added it. So we're saying no political signs except 30 days prior to the election?
That's already per general statutes.
That's a statute.
So we're following.
30 days.
Prior to early election, for early voting.
Oh, for early voting. Thank you. Thank you. Does that say for early voting? Yeah, it does. Okay. Okay.
And that's why we put it in there, because we recognize that the general statutes set that up, so we wanted to be consistent with that. That way, we weren't being more strict than the state standard and causing confusion for either party or any of the parties.
Does that include a political sign in somebody's yard prior to, prior to 30 days prior to early voting?
We'd have to look at that. I mean, I don't know if it would or not. I mean, there's restrictions on signage in residential. I'd have to go back and pour through the code, but.
I don't think it would, Mr. Warden. There is free speech in this country. If I wanted to put up a sign that I wanted John Doe to be elected president in 2028 in my front yard, I don't think there's anybody that can tell me I can't do that. I just believe that whether it's political or not, I have that right. And there's been some cases, there's a case, some of you may remember from Cary, where he didn't like something, and he wrote on his wall with the spray paint, and they took him to court, and he won. He fought city hall, and he won. But again, you have to be very careful, and I don't know what Ryan's example is as far as when they didn't take the Christmas decorations down, but of course, you know, most of us, or a lot of folks go and do that after Christmas, you know, get those ornaments and different things so we'd be ready for the next season and the next year. So I don't know.
I think the cases are so far and few between that I just don't see it being a real issue.
Okay, so if I can.
On the residential.
On the residential side.
If I can come back to the political sign, under Part D, signs excluded from regulations, so signs proclaiming religious, political, or other non-commercial messages that do not exceed one per budding street in 15 square feet in area and that are not illuminated or excluded from regulation.
Is that according to statute, or is that North Carolina or just?
This is our code.
It's our code.
If somebody wanted to put up the 15 square feet with a political message, that's excluded right now.
Right.
So the other that we're talking about putting the 30 days before and the 10 days after is specifically campaign signs.
It just seems to me, with all the issues being on the commercial side for enforcement and not on the residential side, and I don't know, I don't know the law as well as Mr. Carter and others. To me, common sense-wise, it doesn't seem to present the content problem because the zoning is already different, and the rules are already different on setbacks and other kinds of things, even how trash and fences and barriers are managed, and requirements for landscaping are different. So I don't think common sense interpretation, not legal interpretation, that we would create a problem by differentiating between commercial and residential on this. That would be my preference as well.
And correct me if I'm wrong, I'm going to go back to political signs again. We are allowed to put them in the right-of-way during that 30 days prior to.
State rights-of-ways.
Huh?
State rights-of-ways.
State rights-of-way.
Not city rights-of-way.
Not city rights-of-way.
But the practice of the city has been, for several years, to, because again, who knows what's a state road, DOT road, and who knows what's a city street?
We've provided a map to the parties that show which DOT roads and which are city roads. So regardless of practice, what the code states is city rights-of-way are prohibited. If the council wants to add city rights-of-way, you certainly can do that. But right now, the code says city rights-of-way are prohibited. The only exemption in rights-of-way is for DOT roads, and we've provided maps to the chairperson at, Mr. Dedman, at Board of Elections, to share that with all the parties, so they can have a map of the 2024 Power Bill map that shows city rights-of-ways versus state rights-of-ways. So if council wants to make that change, I think that it's perfectly within your purview to add that tonight. If you'd like to do that, you certainly can do that. But I'm just telling you what the code says today, because we need to enforce what is on the books, and if we want to make a change, then we need to bring that change forth to you. So if you all want to make that change tonight, would be an opportunity to do that.
Is this incident-based? I mean, is there?
I can tell you, we've already had complaints this year because of a, signs went up before national out within city rights-of-way. And we had already sent our letters out that outlined what the standards were, and they felt that signs were put up in an unlawful place. And we, as a result of that, we did an inspection, and we removed signs that were in city rights-of-way. Now, they can come pick them up, political signs, but one way to eliminate that would be to include city rights-of-ways being exempt.
The only place that I'm aware that you all have picked up in the city rights-of-ways during the early election period is going into commons where you have the one-stop early voting. I know you have enforced that, and you've taken some of my signs in the past, as well as everybody else's that was there, so.
So I don't want to speak for what happened prior to May of this year. I'm just trying to make sure that me and my staff now, that we enforce the code equitably and per what the code states. And if there's a revision that needs to happen, we'll be happy to bring that forth. So if you, if council feels that that needs to be added so that they mirror the same thing, state or city rights-of-way, I would suggest that you add it to this amendment while we're at it. I think that you can certainly add that.
The map that you're, that you've sent to the Board of Elections was just for this election, because there's never been a map provided before.
Because that question came up, I told the party member that we will get a map to you the next day, and we did.
Okay.
So we just wanted to make sure that all parties are operating under the same guidelines. Now, I can tell you, from an enforcement standpoint, if you exempt city rights-of-way, then that's, we won't even have to worry about political signs during the campaign season.
I'd like to make a motion that, well, or add, excuse, not make a motion, because I, but I would like to amend it so that we do allow in city rights-of-ways the same time period that we specify here, 30 days prior to early voting, the start of early voting.
We're going to change the rules in the middle of election season?
Well, for this, we could make this take effect after the election.
It just broadens things out right now if you were to do that, so.
But you're changing the rules in the middle of election season.
But it's not making it more restrictive, it's making it broader, so that if your sign is out here for. sign is out here, for example, on New Bridge Street, that is a city street, as we know because of the construction.
We certainly could reach out to the, I'm drawing a blank on what his title is with the, Mr. Dedman with the Board of Elections. We could certainly let him know, hey, council made this change that opens up city rights away, if that's what council wants to do.
Or we could make this effective November 6th. You know, just to say whatever we decide tonight becomes effective November 6th if we wanted to, or, or January 1, whatever.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Or maybe we can bring that back to you separately.
Let's do that. Let's, let's take a step back, take a breath here.
Yep.
So number four, we will bring back.
I would like for you also to look at some of our sister, our cities, our surrounding cities and see exactly what they're doing as far as how they, they work this thing too, and if it's, and determine whether or not it has created problems, you know, that they've documented, you know, and give us some feedback on that. What, what do you say about that? I mean.
And maybe another thing too, Mayor, piggyback on what you're saying, if we're gonna make a change like this, it would be nice for the city to be able to talk to the potential candidates upfront, to give them that information upfront, so as they are strategizing their campaign, they will know exactly when they can put out their signs, when the signs have to be picked up, and what the penalty is. I would think it will be more inclusive in terms of giving them the information upfront as opposed to creating confusion.
I agree. And just to let the mayor and council know, we do send a letter out to the Board of Elections that then passes that information out to the campaign. That's why the complaint came in. They received that information and said, we think that there's a violation, can you check on this? So we do share that. I think that's great information to give for the reasons you just stated. We do send that out to the Board of Elections, who then, you know, passes that on to the parties.
Absolutely.
Maybe not as, you know, obviously, this year with some of the changes that we had, we may not have sent it out as early as we would have normally sent it out, but it's basically a template letter, provide there's no changes, we just basically sent out an updated letter. This year just took a little bit more tweaking to it, because we just, we wanted to rewrite the way that it was.
And also, as you mentioned before, it doesn't allow a municipality to supersede what is in the North Carolina general statute, because I can easily see, for example, another municipality in the city in Onslow County that may not agree to adjust how someone can say, and well, this municipality has this, but the city of Jacksonville, but because we, or because of your office would be having that dialogue to let those potential candidates know, they will specifically know what is available and what they can do with the city of Jacksonville, other than another sister city in the county.
So that general statute says that we cannot regulate the political signs in the right of way?
Right.
It's very clear.
Right.
It goes on to say that the municipality can establish their own rules for their own roads. So we, we are allowed to do that differently than that state statute. And that's how the ordinance is currently written. But I will, I will do some research for some other cities, if that's the, the desire of the mayor and council for number four. So we will not propose any changes to number four under regulations for political signs other than what we have, or do you just want to not make any changes at all to this? I mean, we're already past the 30 days prior, and we already have three days following.
Well, I think it's moot to do it at this point during the election cycle. Go ahead, Chuck.
Mr. Mayor, you have a couple of options here. As I have heard, the two issues that we've heard so far that there's some concerns about is Christmas decorations and political signs. You could open the public hearing, hear from anyone who's here tonight who wants to speak, and not adjourn it, but just recess it until either probably the second meeting in November, which will get you past the election. So you can make modifications then, based upon what Mr. King finds or does not find, and might meet y'all, and he also during that time may find out how the folks are dealing with Christmas decorations, and whether there are rules for commercial as opposed to residential. But that would keep you from having to do another publication and so forth unless you believe otherwise.
Well, you really don't want to do anything right now at this point in time.
Yes, sir.
Anyway, I wouldn't think, I mean, it's.
Yeah, we can table it.
They started by doing a public hearing first.
Right, yeah.
And just recess it.
I mean, you wouldn't want to change, set anything in stone at this point.
No, sir.
Not at this point.
We would bring it back to you and continue, if you would, after you opened the public hearing, continue it to your second meeting in November, and you can finalize this, because it has been going on for a while, even on the other issues that Mr. King's brought up. It's not something that is time sensitive, as you, as you, some of you are aware of. We've been talking.
I want to make sure the rest of the council's agreeable to that, and.
Just make one, one little comment. Being a military town, we're a little unique in that a lot of our service members might be deployed during a holiday. I know, I know of a couple, two or three houses that I, that I did some inspections on, who held their Christmas decorations up inside their house anyway till March, when, when husband or wife was coming back from a deployment. So, you know, I just think we need to be a little careful when we start talking about residential regulations. Commercial, I think, is, is much more cut and dry from, from my standpoint, so, just, just a comment.
I think, I don't disagree with those, those comments, I just would point out that, you know, how many holidays are there? Which ones qualify?
Yeah, yeah.
So I mean, you could end up with, you could have 365 days, that there's some sort of a holiday display light that's up, then why, why, you might as well just not regulate the sign then at that point. And I don't know that that's a wise thing from a planning perspective either. So there's a balance there, I just, what is, what is that number? What are the holidays?
What about people who put lights up for, for, for Christmas holiday and then never take it down, just leave it up for next year, so they don't have to climb up on the ladder or up on the roof and restring? I mean, a lot of people do that.
And then the commercial versus the residential? I mean, I think some commercials do the same thing, but if they don't turn them on, I think you could argue they're not in violation of anything. So.
Bring us back some information. Does this sound good?
Yeah.
We'll go ahead and, appreciate it, Ryan. It's a complicated issue there. At least we made it complicated.
That's it.
So, so this time, I'll open up a public hearing in this matter, if anybody wishes to speak to this issue. All right, so we're gonna hold the public hearing open until the second meeting in November?
Yes, sir.
19th, until November 19th.
19th.
And that'll take care of the election thing for this time?
Yes, sir.
And hopefully allow people to get their Christmas decorations up or down, or whatever they're gonna do with them, right?
Yes, sir.
I don't want to be the first one to find somebody $250 a day for, for keeping a Christmas decoration up too long at their house, so, just, just so y'all know.
I can go with that, too.
That's a great problem.
Right, so with that, we're gonna go ahead and move on.
Yes, sir.
To the next item, which is, oh, giddy, another map amendment. Let's see. We have a public hearing here for a map amendment, rezoning of 3155 New Bern Highway from residential multifamily to low-density RMF, in our, low-density RMF 2 corridor commercial. Jeremy Smith will be presenting this item. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Yes, this is a rezoning request submitted by Rose Family Properties LLC for 3155 New Bern Highway. Before you is the existing zoning of this area, with some location to give you an idea where this property is located, directly across from Hendrick Stevenson Toyota on New Bern Highway. Properties to the west and south are zoned residential multifamily, low-density, in the combination of some undeveloped properties and single-family. Properties to the north and east are zoned corridor commercial. Kami Laney's plan identifies this and all immediately adjacent properties as mixed-use with a small area for low-density residential to the northwest. This property is approximately 2.63 acres. This is what the property would look like if rezoned on the city's official zoning map. Again, their proposal is to rezone this 2.63 acre tract from residential multifamily, low-density, to corridor commercial. Ty Water and Associates is their representative, their surveyor. The Planning Advisory Board and the staff are recommending approval of this rezoning request, that accepting the evaluation. Evaluation found in the staff report, based on findings of fact, A through J being found in the affirmative, and that the rezoning advances the public interest by creating more development opportunities. I would say that the, this would follow suit with some rezonings we've done over the last few years to corridor commercial in this area. I'll be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Questions, Chairman?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That will recess the regular meeting, open up the public hearing on this matter, as anyone present wishes to speak to this issue. Yes?
Melanie Marzett, 403 Altus Vista Loop. I think he said for rezoning for commercial use. So what would you put on that? Because I'm trying to do away with the whole, the vape shops and all of that. Would, would that be allowed to be on that property?
Not under our current regulations, let me in.
Okay. And who, the current regulations, but just after the whole Christmas light thing, you can just change the regulations when you feel like it? So I guess what I'm asking is, not under the current regulations, but some down, somewhere down the line, could that be changed for you to put a vape shop on that property?
Like with all.
Or another gas station with vaping?
With, like with any code, the city council could direct staff to amend the ordinance, but they just in this past March of this year, introduced new rules to make it very strict and difficult for vape shops and tobacco shops to open up new locations in the city of Jacksonville.
But that's this city council?
Right.
Okay, that doesn't have anything to do with the future city council, if somebody is elected. I just don't want, because I live over there, so I just don't want another gas station, vape shop, and whatever on that property.
Well, I will say in the corridor commercial, gas stations and whatnot, is that outright permitted, but standalone vape shops, tobacco shops are not, one would not meet the criteria to go there.
Right now.
Right now. Then I'll close the public hearing on this matter. Council, you being asked to consider the proposed request and the evaluation found with the staff report.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the rezoning request, accepting the evaluation found within the staff report, based on findings of facts, A through J being found in the affirmative, the rezoning advances the public interest by creating more development opportunities.
Second.
I have a motion, second. Any further discussion? Here are not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. There, we go down to number nine. Thank you, Gerald.
Thank you.
We have Anthony Prince going to present the public-private partnership for traffic signal construction, all yours.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity to be here. So Rose and Ryan were giving me a hard time earlier about being the slide champion for tonight, so we don't have Mike or Wally here, so I'm gonna play that role, but we're gonna get through these quickly. And I want to talk to you about an opportunity that we have to hopefully further economic development in town. And that, of course, is centered on the concept of a public-private partnership for traffic signal construction. So let's talk about why this, this is important. So there, as you recall, council adopted an economic development policy in 2023. And what you see on the screen there are three of the, the goals that I feel are directly related to this concept here. I'm not gonna read them, but basically what it says is, is that we should look to provide incentives where we can for job creation, we should maintain our strength as the center of retail for Onslow County, and then, of course, we want to use other people's money at any point that we can, whether it be federal, state, or what, or what have you. And as we go through the concept of what I'm talking about here, I'm gonna try to identify how each one of these are further. So over the years, and this is just from my memory, I, you know, I didn't go back in the, in the records at all, but what you're looking at here are traffic signals where we either participated as a city, we built them as a city, or we worked with developers to have them constructed as part of their development project, okay? Some were certainly easier than others, some took longer than others to, to execute. But we're not talking about these, what we're talking about are these. The greens, the green stars there are just ones that I feel could come up within the next 10 to 15 years, you know, based upon some of the mobility challenges that we have out there, as well as some of the growth that we're anticipating. Okay? So moving on to the challenge that we're trying to address here, and mind you, this is related to private construction of, of traffic signals associated with, with private development. What we've experienced is that there's a tap, a, a gap in technical expertise a lot of times. This isn't something that they do on a regular basis, so they have to have specialists assist with those types of processes. Coordinating multiple parties is challenging. You typically put in a signal at a corner, and usually there are four corners, and that means that there are multiple property owners. Each one of them may have a pro-rata share that they need to pay, but the question is, who's gonna be the ringleader? Who's gonna take on the responsibility of building it? And of course, making all the arrangements with other parties to ensure that everybody had, pays their fair share. There is increased cost, we know that for a fact, associated with the, the, the legal fees and the escrow agreements and accounts associated with doing this from a private sector standpoint. And then the timeframe for execution, you know, by having this here, I think there's a timeframe challenge from two perspectives. One is, because we end up having multiple parties, sometimes it's difficult to get this started. And so because we can't get it initiated quick enough, development usually has to lag behind that, because we want the infrastructure to be pushing forward as the project moves forward, so that we don't have traffic out there without a signal to control it. And then the other thing about it, too, is if you recall our construction of, of plantation at Gum Branch, how long did that take? That took several years. And the reason is, because there's a huge lead time in the design process and the DOT approval process, and now that we're looking to do steel poles everywhere, at least the, the state is, you know, those poles took, I think it was nine months to be fabricated and delivered. So, you know, you're looking at a long-term project, either where you go on new signal construction. And I'm not sure that the, the private development community is necessarily always interested in that. But the one here that kind of drives me crazy the most is the concept of last one in. And unfortunately, we've had that happen in the past, but it's something that we're trying to control for. Last one in is essentially you're the last person coming into a project to develop, and guess what? All those expenses and all of that work has been left to you to execute on. Now, that's not fair, you know, and in some cases, it has created situations where land is left undeveloped, because it's cost prohibitive in a lot of, in a lot of ways. To buy the land, to build your project, and at the same time have that capital cost of building a traffic signal. Just for reference, they're not inexpensive by any stretch of the imagination. I mean, the latest one we got an estimate for was for well over $300,000. So the concept here is for the city to take a leadership role, essentially to coordinate all of this. We have the technical expertise, we've done this many times, and we would form a partnership with developers, where we would come to an agreement, whether it's an MOA, or whether it's an, you know, whatever, private-public partnership agreement, to establish a pro-rata cost and the responsibilities and the timeline, et cetera. One thing that we can provide, and this goes back to the concept of incentives, is, you know, we already pay a lot of overhead to have signal professionals on staff every day. They have specialized knowledge, they have specialized skill, they have specialized tools. And so that's something that we can offer in kind to help drive down the costs and help drive down the timeframe of execution on some of these projects. But also, with regard to materials, we end up being the, DOT ends up giving us a lot of surplus equipment, you know, for one reason or another. And so, and this is very expensive equipment. So in, in opportunities where it makes sense, we could repurpose some of that equipment that has come to us from the state to help draw down, or drive down the actual. that has come to us from the state to help draw down, or drive down the actual construction cost. You know, we're not talking about going and buying new equipment or things of that nature, but most of that stuff we have on the shelf. So let's look at an example. You know, it, one of the goals was to facilitate Jack, or to maintain Jacksonville as the retail center of Onslow County. And in some cases, the reason that development is not occurring is because of the infrastructure that's required to make it happen. If you look at the intersection of Western and Williamsburg, we do have some things going on there, but at this point, nothing else is going to happen on those corners until we have a traffic signal constructed. Okay? It already meets warrants, there's already concerns about safety, and, and really, it's just something that needs to be done. When you look at the adjoining, or the, the property owners in the area that could have a stake in that claim or could benefit from the signal installation, you see that it's certainly more than one. Some of it's existing development, some of it's future development. But the intent here would be to come to an agreement where we could share the load. You know, many, many hands make light work. And so instead of any one individual development or property owner having to bear that cost, we would spread it over all of them. Okay? But then we talked about also the ability to use state and federal grants to help make this happen in a cost-effective manner. So we were very proactive, and the mayor, I believe the mayor signed a letter requesting some funding from Senator Lozara to help us build this traffic signal. And that was with the understanding that, of course, if we flip back to this last slide, you can see that the highlighted parcels on the, the bottom of the page there, that is our business park. So we knew that we were a stakeholder in this, and of course, we asked for support, and Senator Lozara was able to oblige. And now we have 135,000 to help build the signal. If you look at in-kind labor and in-kind materials, those are estimates, but signal equipment is expensive. So cabinets, you know, the silver boxes on the side of the road that you see that control the signal, we have, I think, six or seven of those that are just surplus from DOT. And to buy one of them and outfit it, it's at least $30,000. So you can see that some of that in-kind material, some of the in-kind labor, really can help drive down the implementation costs for the private sector and the project in total. We do have an agreement from the Frontier Developer to, to contribute $35,000 to the project. Now, there was nothing that required them to do that, but we asked them, and as a steward of the community, you know, they wanted to, they wanted to contribute. The other three owners, you know, none in particular, but that's just showing the concept as to how we could share the cost over multiple parties and then get to that total number of $340,000. So again, the concept here is to use a variety of funding sources, whether it be federal and state grants, whether it be private money, whether it be in-kind labor and materials, and to use the expertise that we already invest in every year with our Traffic Signals Group to help make these things happen in a timely and effective manner. Really, there's no action required on this one, but I, I wanted to present this and get some feedback, because if we are interested in moving forward, then, then it's something that we would like to have on the agenda for the future, particularly to execute an agreement with the Frontier Developer. And then also, I've gotten verbal commitments from several other property owners out there to, to participate if the council is interested, so we could pull those agreements together and hopefully make a project out of this.
Question?
Okay.
Good concept. Looking forward. One question, the in-kind donation of materials.
Mm-hmm.
Kind of looking at a gift course in the mouth. Gift course in the mouth with, what does the state giving you?
I'm sorry?
What is the state giving you as second-hand equipment?
What are they giving us as second hand? Well, a lot of times what happens when a signal is damaged by a storm, essentially, they come in and rebuild the entire thing. Okay? So the cabinet itself, unless it's hit by a car or unless it's flooded, is usually, you know, in really good condition. And it's still functioning, but if they're rebuilding it, they rebuild it, we end up with those extra cabinets and all the components that are in them. So of course, we're not, we wouldn't go into this with suspect equipment, you know, and of course, our responsibility is to maintain it once DOT accepts it. So if we did that, we would really kind of be working against ourselves. Anything that goes out there would be fully functional and, and completely tested. We test every single traffic signal cabinet for at least a week before we deploy it into the field.
And Anthony, isn't, isn't there a case where we, like, for example, got a pole that had been powder, powder coated, but it, at that particular intersection where that pole was located?
Mm-hmm.
There was a road project and new poles were put in?
Yeah, so perfect example is Western and Gum Branch. And we actually still have those poles, they're over at Public Services. So what happened was they widened the intersection, when they widen the intersection, it changes the design of the poles. They have to be taller, they have to bear more weight. And so when they took the old ones down, we said, hey, you know, the city contributed money to have those powder-coated black. So we would like to hold on to those and reuse them somewhere in, in town. And that's what we plan to do. Don't know exactly where yet, but that, that equipment could have gone back to Castle Hayne and been used somewhere else. Yeah, another perfect example of where we did that is the Hawk Beacon out on Henderson Drive. That's a repurposed mast arm that came, I believe it came from Wilmington, actually. So, you know, it's very common to do this with this equipment, and mainly it's because it's very durable and it's also very expensive.
You know, we have, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead, you're fine.
We've used cost recovery agreements for water and sewer in the past.
Mm-hmm.
And to me, this parallels that concept. Is that being approached in terms of future traffic light placement, that people down the road will be asked to contribute their share even though it might not be an immediate impact?
Well, I think that's something that we can talk about. Right now, we're just exploring the concept. So, you know, that sounds great to me, because guess what? Not all of these parcels are going to be developed today. You know, so if you can assign, and basically what you're talking about is assigning, you know, a cost to a tap fee, right, to help recover some of the investment, the, the capital investment, you know, if we could, if we could do that, and if the law allows us to, then we could move forward with projects before there are even development concepts out there. That's a good suggestion.
I'm sorry, Mr. Prince, I have a question for you.
Sure.
With the fact that you were talking about finding the public partnerships using state and federal dollars, just out of curiosity, what has your research led you to in the utilization of artificial intelligence? Because the first thing that comes to mind is with the National League of Cities and their push for the new Office of AI. And then I also think about North Carolina A&amp;T, which is the largest HBCU in the state of North Carolina that has the number one school of students of color in their field of engineering. So how have you partnered at the collegiate level that definitely have state and federal dollars to do some type of-
Sure.
-project to glean those dollars into municipalities?
So from a local level, we haven't done any of that. But I know at a state level, the, the Ittery Group at, at NC State, they're the ones that do a majority of this type of traffic research, they're looking into all of that kind of stuff.
But what about A&amp;T?
I don't know about A&amp;T.
Is there any way that you can look into that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely, thank you.
Sure, sure. But, you know, AI is kind of the future of, of any type of technology, but I will tell you that the technology that we use, it has to be foolproof.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, it, I mean, so there are so many redundancies built into these, redundancies built into these systems and checks and balances, and so it has to be very tried and tested before the, the state's willing to put it out on the right of way. But yes, I'll take a look at that and get more information.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, yes, ma'am. Sir.
I did have a question. So on, from the Frontier Developer all the way down to owner three, how was that determined on what they paid at Road Frontage, I'm assuming?
Well, what we did is that was based on a parcel, you know, size of a parcel in reality. I think we'll have to come up with a more concrete method over time. But it could be based upon the number of trips that a proposed development generates, it could be based upon acreage. I think where we are here, it's based upon relative impact, based upon the size of a parcel.
Kind of some of those corners are for sale, so I mean, if that got done, I mean, that's going to increase their value for them.
Well, absolutely.
Yeah, so that's a big, big thing for them.
That's, that's that second goal that we talked about there, is that retail happens where there are traffic signals.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other questions or comments?
So it sounds like we're comfortable, and the next step from our perspective would be to bring forward that agreement with the Frontier Developer and then start engaging with the other property owners. And once we get all of that accomplished, then we can start moving forward on, on, actually, it's already designed, we would be able to bid it and then construct it.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We got another one here, don't we? Let's see. Downtown review.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. Continuation of my plethora of slides. But, you know, this is, in my opinion, a very feel-good topic for us to talk about, you know, and the reason is, is because through this planning process, we were in, we were able to engage with a lot of, you know, just exceptional stakeholders throughout our community. And, and as part of that planning process and that engagement, there's just tons of energy around downtown redevelopment, and there were no naysayers. You know, it's hard to believe there are naysayers for everything these days, but the people that we talked to were on, were fully on board with what the city has done and is planning to do in the future. But let's talk about what we've done here. And again, to tie it back to the council goals, but then some of our economic development goals, you know, there's, there's lots of policy that basically says that we should be doing this. Council goal number three, which you hear every year going into the budget process, but then economic development goal, it was verily, clearly stated that that's an area that we want to focus on. And I would say, just as an extension of that, that conversation, is not just to put property into more proactive uses, it's also to, to look after or to pursue things like entrepreneurship and small business development. So where we started was we got information from the council of government saying that there was an EDA grant available. What it would allow us to do is bring in a group of professionals, or professionals, professionals from IEDC, which is the International Economic Development Council. So these are very seasoned individuals who have worked in economic development for years. We had one gentleman come from California, another one from, I believe it was Wisconsin or Minnesota, somewhere up there. And then also, we had someone come from Wilmington. She was the, the vice president of IEDC and, and their kind of business development group. So that's where we started, and as we moved forward in conversations with them, they, they laid out this process that would include a document review, policy and document review, so all of our codes, the plans that we had had for downtown, any other type of downtown advocacy groups that there had been in the past. And then moving past that, they actually would come to Jacksonville for three days to interview stakeholders. Okay? And some of the stakeholders are actually here today. But we were able to talk to, I mean, it was at least 50 people. I don't have a head count for you, but they're all the usual suspects, and they all were very interested in supporting what we were trying to do here. Now, at the end, they were supposed to generate a final report, but guess what? In July, they said they were going to give it to us in six weeks, and that didn't happen. It's October, we feel like we owe the council and the stakeholders some form of forward motion here. So hearing all of the stakeholder feedback, what we did is we generated our own recommendations based upon what all of those folks had to say. So to look at the documents here, and, and the reason that I put this in here, the documents really aren't that important, but you can see how far back downtown redevelopment has gone in history. So 1984 to 85, and then again in 89 and 90, 95, 96. This isn't a new topic for the city of Jacksonville. It's something that reemerges periodically. We have a downtown master plan from 2007. Ryan was telling me that we also have something from 2014 that we should look at. But then, of course, we have our regulations, the UDA, UDO, and our Camelannews Plan, and then our recently adopted Recreation and Parks Master Plan, which does have some recommendations for the downtown area. So again, over 50 stakeholders, these are the different interests or, or groups that they represented. The downtown area redevelopment team, that may be a new name to you, but it's essentially a grassroots movement of folks who own property, who, or who own businesses or live downtown, who really were just trying to get something started. They want to work with the city, and we've been working with them for probably about the past year. Some of our former BOLD representatives, I saw Carmen here earlier, we spent probably about two hours together talking about downtown, and, you know, she shared some excellent perspective and, and history, Bay Shore community, and you can, of course, read the rest, but again, some really key local stakeholders. The recommendations cover this, these six areas. We are going to go through each, but we're not going to go through every recommendation. The policy and goals section is really more administrative in nature, but then the rest of them, they basically inspire action. Okay? So looking at the policy and goals, one of the key deficiencies that we identified, and I think that we've talked about this on multiple occasions, is that we don't have a, a delineation for what downtown actually is. And if we're going to focus our effort on downtown, we should probably spend some time talking about what is downtown. And so if council agrees with these recommendations and supports moving forward, that's something that we will talk about in the future. We want to talk about being redevelopment-friendly, that is something that I think we're all interested in. The fact, again, economic development and entrepreneurship, no two ways about it, redevelopment, downtown supports that. And then, as I mentioned before, review some of those old master plans, and let's see if they need to be updated. Are they current? Do they need to be changed? There is also this common theme of, that we need to treat downtown differently. Downtown is not Western Boulevard, it's not the same development pattern, it's not the same intent. So there are ways that we can do that. One of the recommendations was to designate a downtown advocate. What we heard time after time was that things were happening downtown when there was somebody who was paying attention to it every day. Now, whether that's a city employee, or whether that's a nonprofit that we charge that responsibility with, you know, that's another discussion. But again, having that designate, that advocate to really help keep, keep all the balls in the air and moving forward. So there's an option to consider an advisory board, that has occurred in the past, it's a good way to get stakeholder involvement, hands-on, solutions-based approach, disincentivizing building vacancy. Vacancy is a challenge right now. And we don't necessarily know what the solutions are there, but we really need to disincentivize vacancy to save some of the older buildings downtown and get them turned over to become more productive. And then a rehab revolving loan fund, you know, that's some, that's a way to infuse some capital into the rehab process, that's something we could choose to do in the future. I don't think that that's something that we would recommend doing right now. we would recommend doing right now, but it's a really good concept. Public and private investments. I know the mayor's really interested in parking. We've studied parking many times, and now it's time to implement. And I think we're in the process of doing some of that right now, but we want to continue doing that. Continuous streetscape enhancements. I know we're looking at Court Street right now, hopefully pulling out that one-way section, going back in two-way, and get some of that energy, some of that traffic going down that corridor. I talked about the recreation, the master plan. So there are some recommendations in there to help drive, you know, people's interest in recreation downtown. And then the visitor center. You know, the visitor center is an excellent opportunity to create a gateway for our downtown area. You know, we've got the Freedom Fountain. If we had the visitor center, you know, we start creating these gateways that give downtown a sense of place, a place that people want to be. Marketing and communications. So really, this is about getting the word out. And, and I would, I would really kind of emphasize that last bullet there. Work with business community to develop and implement a marketing campaign. So this, historically, what we've marketed in the past is that we're having Winter Fest, you know, we're having National Night Out, things of that nature. But I think if we really want to see people come down and, and spend time, we're going to have to tell the story of, well, you know, maybe you can come down here and start at the Memorial Gardens. Then you can go over and you can rent a kayak and go out on the water. Well, then you can come over here and you can have, you know, a meal or whatnot. So giving people, you know, a really, more, more of a package deal, if you will, to come down and spend time. Economic development. So an idea that, that we've been kicking around is the concept of a small business incubator site. Those have been very successful in other areas, and downtown environments are great for those. Generally, their rents are less, you know, and, and small businesses typically have, you know, they have commercial activities that fit that context. And then, of course, as being an incubator, if they grow to the point where they need to go somewhere else, then they can. But it's a revolving process of continuing to support small businesses. And then the Joed Partnership. One thing to point out is that the partnership, I think, has made, Ron, is it five grants that they've made over the past year or so? Three of those grants have supported businesses in downtown Jacksonville. Okay? And so that's an excellent way to get people to, to, to look at investing downtown. Holdmore City and TDA events, give people a reason to come down. You know, when we were doing a tour of downtown not too long ago, our bus driver had, is a lady who had lived here in Jacksonville for 35 years. And when, she didn't know where she was going when we were directing her, because she had never been there before. She didn't know it existed. She didn't know that we were a riverfront community. So we need to build, you know, that, that knowledge, that interest within people. And to do that, you know, we have to give them reasons to come down. And then, of course, Ms. Edwards, public art. You know, it's not, it's not just about the art. It's about placemaking, you know, and giving people something to do, something interesting to see when they come to visit downtown. So that was a lot of slides and a lot of information. But the next steps, we'd like to develop a council policy on downtown redevelopment that helps us kind of operationalize some of these recommendations. We also want to finalize these recommendations and get all of them to you in written format so you can see them. This isn't the entire inventory. Didn't want to bore you for longer than 10, 20 minutes, whatever it's been. Tracy and I are working on a small business development program that works very well with the concept of the Joed Partnership. And that's where we've identified some CDVG money to potentially be paired with some of our economic impact money to go out and make either small business grants or small business loans for people who want to generate a business, a business downtown, or grow a business downtown. All of this, if we choose to move forward, will require assets, you know, it'll require resources. So that will be part of the, part of the discussion at our council retreat. And so we're going to get into some of these issues, of course, assuming that the council would like to talk about this more. But we'll talk through some of that stuff at the budget retreat, figure out what may be funded and what isn't funded in the 26 budget. But then we've also been working with John Sawyer, and Ryan and I were talking about this earlier in the week. We've partnered with John Sawyer, who's a, who's an architect that we've worked with several times on, on different projects. And he has a history in working in Wilmington to help facilitate their downtown redevelopment. John is a problem solver. Okay? He knows the building code forward and backward, and he has innovative solutions to deal with the challenges of retrofitting old buildings. So we now have three property owners who are participating in this program. Essentially, that's where we provide technical support to them to help develop their concept, proactively address the challenges, so that when they go to start the building permit process, there's a high level of certainty that they're going to be successful. You know, that's a pretty intimidating process without the support of, of an architect like John Sawyer, and he's done an excellent job for us. The rezoning comes from the fact that some of the property owners want to do things that aren't allowed by the current zoning. And so what will be, what we'll do in the near future is come back and talk to council about potentially rezoning a few parcels to allow those property owners to do things that can help further downtown redevelopment. So in a nutshell, that's where we've been. That's, that's what we've done, and this is where we are. How do we feel about what I've presented here?
Cautiously optimistic.
Cautiously optimistic.
Good. I think this is a really, it's taken us 40 years looking at those dates. It was 84 was the first. So, you know, it's taken us 40 years to get to this point in the conversation. And, you know, we're trying to turn a glacier, if you will, or steer iceberg. It's not going to happen fast, but it's finally at a point where there's momentum and some things starting to happen on the ground. That's very encouraging. I know in many, we've had many conversations in different meetings about downtown, about how we could help, about what we can do, what we can't do, how can we make things happen. So I'm, I'm pleased. I can only speak for myself, but I'm pleased to see the collaboration. I'm glad that we have DART and others who are stepping up and saying, hey, we want to help because the government can't do it all. Obviously, we're a big piece of the pie, but we're not the whole thing. So.
Sure.
This is, this is a good blend. You're also hitting many, you know, it's multifaceted. It's not a one-and-done silver bullet approach. It's more realistic than that. It's, I think, more sustainable as well.
Well, I think part of the discussion at the council retreat is, what do we do first? The recommendation is not going to be that we do all of this right now. That's just not practical. But, you know, we have to continue the momentum somehow, and we want to talk through that, see what's the best strategy. If you, if you talk to John Sawyer about his work in Wilmington, he would tell you that it started in the late 70s. So it doesn't matter if you're Jacksonville. It doesn't matter if you're Wilmington. These things take time. But they also take a lot of persistence. And, and I think there may have been a little bit more of that in Wilmington, which is why they are the way that they are. But I think there's a lot of momentum here right now for us to be equally successful.
I think it's going to take a realization, too, that it's going to require considerable seed money on the part of the council to encourage investment. Mayor talks about parking. Sure, we need parking. Parking will encourage business, but so will development create the need for more parking. We hope we could use more parking, but we, not yet.
It's all about putting the right pieces in the right place at the right time. It's not an apple we have to eat all at once, but hopefully incrementally. You know, one of the benefits of downtown Wilmington is that they've been able to fund a lot of the improvements down there based upon the increase in the tax value of the properties as redevelopment has occurred. So, you know, there's a lot of ways to go about doing it, but it's a very good point, sir.
Well, I think you've got to concentrate on what kind of organization are you going to create to marshal the strategies and the plans to put these elements into action?
Well, let me tell you, when I was going through all these records right-
It's not fair right now just to rely on a cat, on a staff. We need, we need workers.
Well, you're exactly right. You're exactly right. And that's why we're standing here, because our workers that we had to help us with this process, they're not finishing their work. So we're doing that for them. But if you look at this, this document list right here, when I read through all of them, they said Mr. Bittner all over them in a lot of places. So we're going to rely on your expertise.
Where are you on the road? I know that's been a big topic of business owners down. Are we still on track to have that finished soon?
You know, honestly, sir, I can't speak to that. But the last that I heard was that we're still on track for completion by the end of the year, correct?
Yes, sir.
So we've got plantings going on down there. Curb work is, is being finalized. I imagine that at some point in the near future, we'll start to see some asphalt. But at Bay Shore, we still have a traffic signal to construct as well. So.
We still intend to do the two-way traffic on Court Street, correct?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Where does that add on the grant scheme?
It's in this fiscal year, Mayor.
It's been designed and ready to implement.
It's an investment, but it's an invest, if we view it as an investment and we take it in, in chunks that we can manage so that it's sustainable, it's always a wise thing to develop a downtown. If you look at, a lot of communities much smaller than Jacksonville have very vibrant downtowns, and they, they reap the rewards of having that through tourism, through local spending, through tax dollars and, and the like. I know, I saw an article and shared it out, gosh, six months ago, eight months ago, I don't even remember now, about, based on the, the art economy in Wilmington, not counting ticket sales and event sales, netting $75 million for that county because of the ancillary spend around the vibrant arts communities that they've developed largely in the downtown area. So it, it will pay. It's just like, like the process, it takes time. The rewards will take time as well, but they'll come.
Well, we took our little tour of downtown Wilmington a couple of weeks ago, and they have done some amazing things in their downtown area. But again, you know, Wilmington is a city that's been in existence since the 1700s. And, you know, they had a very vibrant waterfront to begin with. But still, regardless of that, they have done a great deal of work of, you know, with the, for the amphitheater down there, which is a big draw, and a lot of, a lot of residential multifamily has grown up around that, around that amphitheater. Plus, I mean, there's a, a lot of things have fallen in, fallen into place, too, you know, like the city hall, with PPD moving out, selling out of their building, and city hall moving in, and all the surrounding properties that have developed since then. You know, it's just, sometimes it takes some, one big bump and things start falling into place. You know, downtown, you know, it's, our downtown, you know, I policed downtown in the 70s, and we've come a long way since then, as far as how our downtown appears. But again, you know, I think it's, you know, it's something that's going to come together eventually. You know, like somebody said about me with the parking, yeah. My, my thing is that, you know, people have to have a place to park, you know, to be able to come to a business down there. You know, they're not going to take shuttle down. They're going to be, want to be somewhere in the area where they can drive to. I think one of the biggest, one of the biggest drawbacks that occurred was when the jail was located downtown. Of course, there's nothing we can do about it at this point, but I think that took up a lot of the vital property down there that could have been used for a lot better purposes. But that's, that's one of those things that we're going to have to work around.
It's not an insurmountable challenge. And I think the greatest thing about that trip to Wilmington is that they're very willing partners. They learned a lot of things the hard way, and they are willing to share that information with us to help us be successful.
Very informative trip. It was. Any other comments or questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
You're not requiring any action at this moment, correct?
No, sir.
All right. We're going to move on to the reports for this evening, and I'll start with Mr. Jackson.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
No report.
You want to put that in, Bittner?
I just want to say as liaison to Onwassa, I'm proud of the fact that I think we have had three tour, three crews in rotation working in Asheville area. So I'm anxious to see how the Jacksonville crews have fared out, too. I think we've donated quite a bit, haven't we?
Yes.
Okay. I'll wait to hear that.
For me, we have the Beirut Memorial Ceremony tomorrow. This is March the 41st year since that occurred back in 1983. Ceremony will begin at 10:30 at Lejeune Memorial Gardens on November 9th. We have the Veterans Parade that will begin at 10 o'clock PM, or 10, no, PM. I'm not going to do it at 10:00 PM. 10:00 AM on Saturday morning, the 9th, it'll parade down, they'll go down, I'll, I'll let one of y'all handle it at 10:00 PM. It's past my bedtime, anyway. It'll start at Coastal Carolina Community College and end at Brentmore Shopping Center. I encourage everybody to get out and see the parade, honor our veterans as a, as a, at their annual parade. Dr. Washington?
No, but I just want to say that on tomorrow, as you mentioned, Mayor, with the Beirut Memorial, we're going to have many families and friends, both near and far away, that's going to be coming to the city of Jacksonville. And it's a very somber vacation, considering what took place on tomorrow 41 years ago, and how it had a ripple effect throughout this community and still do with families. So just keep those loved ones in prayer.
I'll add to the mayor's list. On November 1st, our parks and recreation teams have red, white, and salute over at the Commons. If you've never been, it's a pretty fun event for bringing the family out for it to help celebrate Veterans Weekend. They've got live bands, food trucks, and a laser light show, open sky. It's pretty cool. And then November 8th at 10:00 AM at the Freedom Fountain is the annual Freedom Fountain Observance, also around Veterans Day weekend, to honor all the military who have served and come through Onslow County at any part of their service. This is hosted and facilitated by Onslow Civic Affairs. It is open to the public, and all are welcome to join us if you can.
Mr. Ward?
No report.
Mr. Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. Follow-up on Mr. Bittner's comment there. We have had our crews out across western North Carolina. Our police have been in Asheville, and we had 10 officers there. Our fire department has been active in Black Mountain, and our public services crews have been active in Olford, and then they're going over to provide some assistance to the city of Asheville. You know, one of the things that we've seen during this, during this helene in the aftermath is our neighbors are experiencing recovery and then some rescue and rebuild. So our services, as we've seen here in Jacksonville, are needed at different times. So I think what we're going to see, back to Mr. Bittner's comment, is our water and wastewater crews providing some ongoing service through the North Carolina system. So it's been real good to see our teams led by Chief Tallman responding to the needs of our neighbors in western North Carolina. It's been a good process. I think with Onwassa and with Wally, them working together to send crews is a value add. And we just continue to appreciate the council's support in that operation because it is, it's effective. And we've heard some, some good positive feedback from the neighbors in western North Carolina. So when we get full reports, we'll gladly share that with council and with community. Because our, for our volunteers that have stepped up and said they can go and spend time away from their home or their families here to go out, that's a very valuable outreach effort for our teams to see the process. And it also gives us some of that experience. So when things happen to us, our crews are familiar with what to expect when the time comes. So we'll give more updates on that one. Mayor, you did make comment about Beirut Observance tomorrow. On the screen here, we had a number of students from North Woods Park Middle School who came out and helped us with the Yellow Ribbon Campaign. It's, it's an awesome opportunity for us to have the students come out. If you remember, the students originally wanted to plant the trees, and now for us to go out and do the Yellow Ribbon Campaign. It brings those students in with, with some of our veterans, and they get to, to be together at the- at the Memorial Gardens. So you're bringing the students out of the classroom, you're giving them a piece of history, and you're connecting them with our veterans. I don't think we can have a better partnership between community, school system, and our veterans than what we have during the observance that we have here. This is out at the actual trees. You'll see some of our police officers, you'll see the veterans, and again, you see the students, and you see our team. A lot of smiling faces. Hopefully, it's because they know that they're part of not forgetting. And as the mayor said, for the observance tomorrow, we go and do this in honor of and in remembrance of, for those members of our community that lost their lives on that day, and to show the pride that we have in city of Jacksonville and our Marines. Also, earlier today, the mayor came and was able to receive recognition from the North Carolina Chapter of the Rolling Thunder for accommodation of support for the veterans parade that the mayor pointed out. I do believe it'll be in the AM, but if it's in the PM, stay all day, could be one heck of a day. That'll be great. It's nice to have, it's nice to have these guys come in and show that recognition, because it is very important to us to encourage the participation at the parade and support for our veterans throughout the community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Carter?
No report, Mayor. Thank you.
Let's entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
All right.